Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Whitman Hansen Regional School Committee of November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. A reminder that we are being recorded and streamed on WHCA. A reminder, so I would ask everybody at this time, please stand for the pledge. Join me. A reminder to folks, we are going to be going into executive session. We will not be here. We will be a while. I can't give you an idea of how long that will be when we come back down. That's when we'll begin a business session. Okay? So can I have a motion to go into executive, please?
Still moved.
Yes, excuse me. The executive session is to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, and mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline, the dismissal of complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, individual, and to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiation with non-union personnel if necessary. And that's why we're going into executive session. We will be back when it is done, and the first order of business will be public comment, and we'll again talk about that when we come back. So can I now have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, and voice vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes.
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 Okay, we all, it's unanimous, one abstention, nine four. We'll be going into executive session. Could I have a motion to bring us back into session, please?
A motion to bring this back into session.
All in favor? Start with public comment. Amy Gavin, if you would come up, please. Amy, just before you speak, we're not timing you, doing the time yet, but
Oh, good.
Yeah, we just want to
Makes me happy to hear that.
We just want to remind, public comment, and Hillary's gonna read our policy on public comment, so everybody understands, please.
I'm gonna skip just to the important part, but if anybody wants to search, our public comment policy is policy B E D H. So the big part here is our public comment policy. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and address and shall speak no longer than three minutes. And our public, excuse me, our public comment session is for a maximum of fifteen minutes at the beginning of the meeting and a maximum of fifteen minutes at the conclusion of the meeting.
Okay, Amy, you all set?
Yes, thank you. Hi, Amy Gavin, my address, one sixteen Helen Drive in Hansen. Chair, members of the school committee, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to share concerns that many families and staff have raised about leadership, transparency in the direction of our district, and to ask for decisive action to restore trust and refocus on students. First, there is a clear lack of confidence in current leadership. A vote of no confidence in Jeff and George has already occurred, and it appears to have been largely glossed over. Staff and parents deserve a public acknowledgement and a meaningful response from the committee. Second, governance and decision-making are overly concentrated. The organizational chart created by current administration shows that George and Jeff posted publicly that everything is run through both Jeff and George. Therefore, when Mr. Farrow stated, "I'm just the assistant," at the recent subcommittee meeting was misleading. Either the administration was not following its own chain of command, as he appears to be a central gatekeeper, or he has not taken accountability for his role in the current situation. Overall, the chart and structure of central office raises serious concerns about checks, balances, and accountability. Third, hiring and promotions have eroded confidence. Central office under the current administration has repeatedly elevated close associates, colleagues, or employees into high-paying positions. These moves give the appearance of an old boys' network. At the same time, student face and roles have been cut. District-wide educational coaches have been shuffled, and interventionists have been eliminated. The result is fewer supports for students, especially those who need reading and math help but do not qualify for special education. Those are the children that are gonna be hurt the most. Fourth, we need immediate budget transparency. The district has allegedly failed to properly track Circuit Breaker, the special education reimbursement data, with the exception of the current special education director, who we have been told received a pink slip. This lack of transparency has created deep distrust and makes it unlikely that the community will support any future budget override without a full accountant. Fifth, instructional practices must be grounded in what works for our learners. Tools like iReady may have a place, but they are not sufficient for many students, particularly those with disabilities, who benefit from individualized, paper-based, or teacher-led interventions. We need a balanced model that prioritizes
Your time is up, Amy. Finish up your time, three minutes.
All right, fine. Give me a second. I'm gonna send this, and I'm gonna post this on all the Facebook pages, and I will email this to the entire school committee. I'm gonna, just please, for one moment, I just have a few requests, and I do want this to be heard, so please let me continue.
Well, you're taking the time of other people.
I respectfully ask the committee to take the following actions. Publicly acknowledge and address the no-confidence vote in both Jeff and George with a clear response in next steps. Clarify and, if necessary, rebalance decision flow as shown on the organizational chart to avoid gatekeeping and increase accountability. Commission an independent audit of recent central office promotion titles and compensation to prioritize restoring the base position.
Amy, I have a whole list of people who would like to speak, and I'd like to. Chair?
Again, I will post this on all the Facebook pages, and I will send this to the school committee. You are elected to serve students, families, and staff, not administrative convenience or personal networks. The goal now must be, we must be to regain trust, and that cannot be done by the same people in practices that had led us here.
Gianna Rivero, thirty-nine Rose Way in Whitman. Hello, school committee, teachers, and students. My name is Gianna Rivero, a senior Whitman Hansen. Serving as a student advisory member for the last three years, I've been closely following this budget issue. Today, I'm not only speaking for myself, but the entire student body. As I look back, I've come to appreciate the true meaning of a teacher. Of course, we value our academics and the teachers who guide us in the classroom, but equally important are the ones who shape us as people. There is overlap too, but it's those staff who define us as students, build community, and who inspire us to make a difference. As president of Key Club, here in the bold of our advisors where layoff left us stunned. Ms. Atchison, a guidance counselor who has shown nothing but kindness and unwavering to support to every student who has walked in. Her willingness to join Key Club this year strengthened student connections, and she became an active, positive force in our school community. She didn't just advise us, but made each student feel seen. Now, Mrs. Shine, I stand here in complete shock at the decision to let her go. She was staff member of the year. She is the foundation of this school, the sunshine. Any student who needed someone, whether they were struggling or just need a moment of kindness, felt comfortable walking into her Disney and cow-decorated office. She has changed the lives of countless students, not just within these walls, but long after they graduate. As the advisor of Key Club for the past two years, she not only gave her time, but her heart. She comes with us on weekends to volunteer for people in need. She personally drives us all the sandwiches to Key Club after school, and no matter what event was happening, games, plays, or even daily check-in, we would always hear her voice cheering us on. I understand there are real budget implications, but it's hard to see these staff members go. Throughout the process, I've tried to stay positive because that's what these two teachers have taught me. I remind myself that we were lucky to be shaped by them, and maybe as hard as it is, another school out there needs them just as much as we did. Concluding, I want to sincerely thank you, Ms. Atchison, for supporting all students through everything, from challenges to Key Club. Our connection has grown greatly, and I could not be more thankful. And to you, Ms. Shine, thank you for being the most impactful staff member I've ever had in my twelve years of education. Your dedication has truly left a mark on everyone. As I grow up, I aspire to reflect even a fraction of the brilliance and kindness that you two represent. To all the teachers being cut, thank you for everything, and please continue making a difference. I appreciate the effort to figure this out. I just want to make sure student voices are included as we approach this Friday, especially when it comes to the impact these staff members have had on us. Thank you.
Paul Robach, Jennifer Robach. Is Paul Robach still here? Oh. Jen, I'm putting you together, okay?
seven nine Bedford, Whitman, Massachusetts, and I have been in the school district since I was three years old. I was, I am, I am here tonight because I want to tell you that the special education program has meant to me because of the hard work of teachers, my family, my special education staff. I have been able to learn classes with my peers all through my time in Whitman Hansen High School. I love my teachers, I love my school, and I love my friends. It makes me very sad here that teachers are being cut. My teachers helped me, things succeed. They helped me to feel confident and helped me be part of the community. Please do better for me, please. Do better for my friends and do better for my teachers, whoever who help us every day. Thank you. And I personally want to say, Catherine Brewster, I wanted to say hello to you, and I wanted to say, I love us buddies.
I live in eight seventy-nine Bedford Street with him. I'm here tonight to express two major concerns that I have had. First, communication. Families should not have to struggle to reach administration. I know of several parents who have sent multiple emails with no response. I have myself, I myself have emailed administration twice and then the special education coordinator without hearing back. These lack of responses directly impact my son and his programming, and I understand that you are navigating the fallout of significant budget and staffing challenges, but those demands cannot replace the responsibility to communicate with students and families. We deserve timely, clear answers, especially when decisions affect our children's, children's education. Second, I am deeply concerned about the position chosen for cut. Losing a first-grade teacher, a second-grade teacher, and interventionist who work, who work keeps students on grade level directly impacts classroom learning. At the high school, the loss of a guidance counselor and adjustment counselors is equally alarming. Many students depend on these trusted adults, these relationships that students have developed and manage their emotions, stay engaged, and feel supported. Removing these positions will create real harm to our students. So I asked, what positions were eliminated that do not involve direct contact with students? Interventionists may not have classrooms, but their work is essential. Who will provide interventions they have responsibilities for? Who will students identify, identified as needing Tier Two supports continue to receive them from? I am asking the committee to provide parents in the community with a clear plan for mitigating the educational impact of these cuts, along with the cuts made in June, and to explain what additional harm would come from a potential Phase Two. We also need to understand how the district will prevent an increase in special education referrals and potential out-of-district placements as services are reduced. Our students deserve stability, transparency, and a plan that protects their learning and the ability to trust that all their educators they've learned to love will be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Trask.
Kathleen Trask, sixty-five Homeland Drive in Whitten, Mass. I am a parent of a high school junior. Thank you to the chair and committee for listening to my comments this evening. I have been a resident of Whitman for five years, and prior to this had not attended any school committee meetings until this crisis. My impression was that the school committee worked with the information we had, and while we now know it wasn't sufficient information, you were doing the best with what you knew. However, now we know more. I am saddened and frustrated that there isn't more empathy and action from the school committee and the superintendent to right the ship. I speak of empathy because at the end of all of these decisions, there are people, children who will not receive the level of education and care they deserve due to the failures of the adults who lead them, teachers who are not being cared for by those who are supposed to manage the money, which could be providing them a sense of job security, and the public, who is not being spoken to with respect and given the information as to how this will be solved. The lack of empathy on display from certain members and consultants is palpable. To say things at a public meeting like, "This is our meeting, not yours," shows a lack of respect, care, and understanding of what it is to be a public servant. What I would like to see out of the school committee is continuing to learn from the errors of the past and questioning more of the information that is given. When you don't get an answer, or you're given one that's insufficient or unclear, give the person a deadline when to respond with what you asked. If we continue to live by open-ended timelines, we allow space for bad habits to continue and progress to stall. My request is that there be a public forum with some sort of independent moderator to ensure that it stays on task and does not devolve into fighting and accusations, where the school committee and superintendent work with the public and have an active collaborative conversation versus speaking at the public. I would also request that the superintendent, along with representation of the school committee, hold assemblies at the school and the district and speak directly to the children and apologize for the mismanagement that has led to such disruption for them. I feel the direct impact of these choices, along with teachers looking at them in the eye, is not only a lesson that their town leaders have to make difficult decisions, but they take accountability for the choices that they make. In closing, no one should be saying that the job of a school committee member is easy. I'm certain that what is in front of you is more of a lift than any of you expected when you chose to run for the position of a public servant. But this is the reality of where we are, and it's time for the hard work. It's time to step up the normal pace of business and do more. Speak with your constituents rather than at them. Listen to what they say far outside of a three-minute moment you allow them to have. Collaborate with community members that have ideas and experience beyond what you have at the table. Work with compassion and empathy, knowing that the choices you make have impact on things ranging from student learning to the values of our homes in this community.
Okay, finish up, Kathleen.
Again, thank you for taking the time to listen, and I hope that we can move forward in a new direction, taking ownership of the failures of the past and moving forward with a new focus, attitude, and dedication to the community than has been shown.
Thank you. I know it's getting late, but we'd like to hear from a few more people before we get into our meeting, okay? So we're gonna expand the time a little bit. So next is Joe Campbell.
Joe Campbell from Woodbine Avenue, Hansen. I was told to wear black and red, so I went old-school, apparently. From me, the taxpayer, when a school committee publicly blames the towns for being fiscally responsible in its own budget, it creates a dangerous and misleading narrative, one that pits departments, offices, and residents against each other. The town has a legal and ethical obligation to balance its budget responsibly, just as the school department does. Suggesting that responsible budgets is an obstacle to education funding oversimplifies a complex problem and diverts attentions from real solutions. The kind of blame shifts the controversy away from collaboration and towards more conflict. It risks eroding trust between the community and its elected leaders. True, sustainable funding on both accounts, the towns and the schools, come from thoughtful planning, transparency, and honest dialogue about the needs, the priorities, and the constraints. Our students deserve better than political posturing. They deserve leaders in the town halls and the schools that build budgets that are grounded in reality and focus on the future. Only through cooperation with the towns will you be able to create anything stable for the future. Over the past several months, many in our community have noticed a troubling gap between the words and actions of some of the elected school board officials. In public meetings, these officials speak of unity, transparency, and respect, yet on social media, the town, the tone often shifts, where their comments, posts, and interactions paint a very different picture. From me, the father of a student, our students are taught with, are taught the character means acting with consistency, whether someone is watching or not. They should be true for the people who represent them. All statements should be true. Mark Twain said that if you tell the truth, you don't have to remember anything. The truth doesn't change from the boardroom to the online feeds. This is not about politics, it's about integrity. Tonight, you very well may hear an elected school committee member offer an apology to a statement made in a public forum. If that apology is short and to the point, admitting just an incorrect perspective on their part, great. Other than that, keep the forked tongue behind your teeth, because many of the board's online presence contradicts what's said in front of the camera. From me, a union leader in the largest school district on the South Shore, trust me when I say, fix this now. Don't let employees or former employees hide from their part. Know if you are not transparent, this issue will linger for a long time. My district that I work in, for eleven years, has dealt with this same budget crisis and very similar since two thousand and twenty-three, and it hurts because it ripped us apart.
Joe, time.
We still feel it every day. Work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Kevin.
Good evening. Kevin Kafka, President, Whitman Hansen Education Association. Cindy McGinn, Vice President. The Whitman Hansen Education Association respectfully submits the following statement to the Whitman Hansen Regional School Committee regarding the ongoing concerns related to district leadership, staffing decisions, and the overall future of our great district. Number one, follow-up on the vote of no confidence. On behalf of our membership, the WHA requests a formal response from the school committee regarding the recently issued vote of no confidence in the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. This vote reflects deep and widespread concern about, among educators, about leadership decisions that have directly contributed to the present crisis. Our members seek clarity. What actions does the school committee intend to take in response to the vote? What steps will be taken to restore trust between district leadership and staff? Number two, concern over decision to riff non-student-facing staff. WHA remains deeply troubled by the district's decision to implement reductions in force, saying that these reductions would be staff members who are not in student-facing positions. Yet despite repeated assurances that instructional roles would be preserved, these cuts have directly impacted educational operations, building-level support, and the day-to-day functioning of our schools. Our members deserve an explanation regarding the criteria used in these decisions and how these choices align with the district's stated priorities for student learning and delivery of instruction and services.
Three, we request an independent audit. Given the magnitude of the budget shortfall and the profound disruptions it has caused, WHA formally requests that the school committee authorize an independent, third-party audit of the district finances. An unbiased review is necessary to fulfill, to fully understand how the district arrived at this point, to identify systemic weaknesses or errors, and to prevent such a crisis from occurring again. Transparency is essential to rebuilding confidence across the school community. Four, building a better future for the district. WHA also stands ready to work collaboratively with the school committee, district leaders, and community stakeholders to chart a more stable, transparent, and student-centered path forward. We ask the committee to engage directly with educators in this process, as we are the closest to the needs of the students and the realities within our schools. A stronger future for Whitman Hansen requires shared decision-making, responsible financial stewardship, and leadership that values the voices of its staff. Five, the ongoing challenges staff are enduring. Despite all the uncertainty and strain of the current situation, your district educators continue to report to work every day, providing stability and care for your students while we carry the emotional weight of unanswered questions. Staff are fielding concerns from parents and students without having the information needed to reassure them. This is an untenable situation, and it underscores the urgent need for communication, direction, and concrete action from district leadership and the school committee. In conclusion, WHA urges the Whitman Hansen Regional School Committee to address these concerns promptly, transparently, and collaboratively. Our educators and our community, and most importantly, our students, deserve a clear plan, honest communication, and immediate steps toward rebuilding stability and trust within the district. We remain committed to advocating for our members and for the high-quality education of every Whitman Hansen student. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Kayden Bandini. Okay, then I'll go to Tessa Feely.
Tessa Feely, one eighty-one, Azalea Way. Hi, I'm Tessa Feely, and I chose to sign myself up to speak tonight because of the large support system here that is most important to me and the other a thousand students at our school, which is our counselors' department. If we, for example, get rid of the ripped school counselor, Ms. Atchison, who I have grown very close with, it will result in approximately two hundred and thirty students being divided amongst four other school counselors. This is an unfathomable responsibility for the other counselors to take on. As a result, this will affect the entire student body, as counselors will have to adjust to their new caseload in addition to the students they are already servicing. The concerns are, what does this mean We are putting unrealistic expectations upon them by taking away a member of their team and taking away a member of our community. Not only will this negatively impact our counselors, it will also impact all of our students. Students at this high school have spent years growing bonds and placing their trust within their assigned counselors, as well as the adjustment counselors, just like Ms. Scheim, when they have been struggling, when they have needed that person who will listen to them and be there for them when no one else will. By taking away their counselors, their support system will be ripped away from them. I've had many conversations with students who have gone through very difficult situations that seem impossible to cope with, like apparent passing, addiction, or mental health struggles. Without counselors helping them and being there for them every step of the way, who knows where they would have ended up? Thank you.
Thank you. Porter Toomey.
Porter Toomey, 117 Washington Terrace, Whitman. I would like to speak to the committee and administration to show the real-life impact these cuts have on actual students. A lot of my favorite teachers have received deduction and forced notices. I am losing both my math teacher, Mr. Hood, and my wind teacher, Mr. O'Handley, almost three months into the school year. This is especially difficult because I built relationships with them, and they mean a lot to me. I was nervous to start middle school, but these two teachers made that transition easier. It really makes me upset to think about going to school and not seeing them every day. I think that the district is losing many impactful people and will be worse off for it. It feels unfair that those cut, that those who chose the cuts decided to take, take two teachers away from one grade in one of the middle schools, especially a grade in their first year of middle school. Thank you, Mr. Hood and Mr. O'Handley, and thank you for listening.
Dawn Byers.
Dawn Byers, 20 Russell Road, Whitman. Unfortunately, this district is faced with bigger problems than just a 1.4 million deficit. I'm going to ask you to address some things. This district does not operate like a regional school district. The staff operates in silos, individual schools where they don't communicate and collaborate among grade levels across the district. Schools are divided by zip code. You can do better as a regional district. I've received messages from former school principals from Whitman-Hanson. This is a toxic environment. Parents will not speak up, aside from this crisis, for fear of retribution, retaliation to their children. You, the committee, trusted the administration, but you did not verify. You dismissed, harassed, or intimidated former school committee members who tried to verify. Your silence perpetuated the toxic bullying culture that Whitman-Hanson has been known for. How do you rebuild public trust? Do you keep a leader who says he'll do better? Superintendent negotiated an enhanced retirement package himself that aligns with the Unit A increased sick-time buyback. He made major equipment and infrastructure purchases like septic works, skid steers, cat loaders, using education funds that should have been billed to the towns. Speaking of the towns, they're not off the hook either. Decades of pressuring the school committee to reduce its budget while they fully fund every other public education line item for vocation and agricultural schools. Our Whitman-Hanson kids matter too. MASC guidance is clear. The school committee grants the superintendent full responsibility for his duties, and your job is to hold them responsible for acceptable results. That responsibility is not just an annual evaluation. It must take place when there are blatant policy violations, when an employee refuses to communicate with you, the committee, his boss. This moment requires more than promises. It demands weekly meetings, asking hard questions. At the budget subcommittee meeting, Mr. Farah reported $400,000 in savings. Have you received a report of that detail? Who had the final say over building staff decisions, the superintendent or the building principals? Have you seen the reconciliation of salaries to positions? Anyone who held power in 2018 with the student walkout in 2019 cuts should consider stepping down. Staying in position only blocks new leadership, who is truly capable of closing achievement gaps. To the committee, my final comment, if you are not fully committed to the schools, if you answer first to other municipal departments, then who is truly advocating for our students? If not you, then who?
Ava Gentile.
Hi, my name is Ava Gentile, of 125 Whitman Ave. My speech is going to be short today, and then I'm going to be passing it on to my friend, Ella. I am only a sophomore at the school, but the amount of teachers that I have seen pass through is obscene to me. Many of these teachers I have been able to make strong connections with, and it has been heartbreaking for me to see them go. I last, at the end of last year, we had teachers go. At the beginning of this year, we had teachers go. Is this just going to be a repeated cycle? This needs to end because it has been detrimental to me, many other students, many other parents, many other teachers, to everyone in this district. And I want to ask the administration, the committee, everyone here, what are we going to do about it? Because this needs to be fixed. This can't keep going on. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ella Leach, and I'm a senior here at Whitman-Hanson. I'm also the person who organized the walkout on Monday morning. Me and countless other kids all over the district are losing teachers and counselors who help us the most because they're taking accountability for someone else's wrongs. And yet somehow, the thing we still can't seem to find is any accountability from the people running this place. How did we end up in a world where not a single administrator job felt even a faint breeze from these layoffs, while these teachers, you know, the people who actually teach us, took the entire hit? The fish rots from the head. Pick whatever metaphor you like. They, they all land in the same place. The problem is coming from the administration, and everyone with functioning eyes can see it, except the people whose job it is to hold them accountable. I would like to specifically mention Mrs. Scheim again. This is a hard one for me. I was 14. I was a freshman. It was about three years ago, and I tried to kill myself. No one else was here for me, but you know who was? Mrs. Scheim was. She saved me. And for her to be let go, I am disgusted. And for, and so, and she doesn't just help me, she helps so many other people. And to think that she has to leave before I graduate is one of the worst feelings I've ever had. Please, take accountability, somebody. Thank you.
Liliana.
Hello, my name is Liliana Roback. I live at 879 Bedford Street in Whitman. I'm a junior at Whitman-Hanson High School, and due to the cuts put in place, I will be changing guidance counselors again for the third time in my high school career. My freshman year, my guidance counselor retired. Sophomore year, Mrs. Atchison became my guidance counselor, and I truly connected with her. She has made great connections with each, with each and every student she has had, regardless of their academic performance or otherwise behaviors in school. She's easy to talk to and made me feel like an equal rather than a student. And now, halfway through my junior year and right before very crucial times for college prep, my counselor will be changing again. I do not know Mrs. Scheim well, but her impact on the school has been one that, that not many people can make. She has helped many students through hard times and genuinely made the community a better place. But especially, she has been an amazing teacher to my brother. Sorry. The fact that you, as a committee, say that you are here for the students, but allow people like Ms. Atchison and Ms. Scheim to be ripped, but not make cuts in executive positions is baffling to me. There are kids in elementary schools losing support in key times of development where they have, where they have spent year, all year getting attached to a teacher just to lose them. I am deeply worried for the younger grades, who will have to deal with the repercussions of your incompetence in the district for years to come. I feel sympathy for the teachers who have lost their jobs because of your inability to do yours. You have let in a disgusting amount of money be overspent in our budget, and as a student, I feel that this council and the people in charge of our district have failed us. And I, for one, am embarrassed and ashamed to be under this corrupt leadership. Thank you.
Ava Vashowski. Okay, sorry. Well, we've had a lot of great speakers today. Samir. Thank you for all your comments. Now, we'll try to do a little bit of our meeting anyway. Okay, approval for meeting minutes, October 8th, 2025. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous? Approval of meeting minutes, October 30th, 2025.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, now, my next, it's a suggestion, approval, to start having two meetings a month, starting with December, and changing the December 10th meeting date to December 3rd and December 17th. I would like unanimous motion by, well, agreement by the committee, doesn't really need to be motion, to do at least two, to do two meetings a month instead of one. Years ago, they, they were two meetings a month, when I was on it years ago. It went back to one, I don't know when. So we're going back to two meetings a month, and I'd like to start next month, starting, and so, as December 3rd and December 17th. How does the committee feel? Committee agree? Yes? Okay. Next, on the agenda, this apology from school committee.
At the meeting on November 5th, I stated that the towns are putting money in their back pockets. I would like to apologize if those words led anyone to believe that I think any person or persons are stealing money. My intention was to express my frustration in the town's ability to annually generate significant money in free cash, while stating they cannot afford to support schools and other vital town services. It is disheartening. A true partnership between the leadership of both towns and the school district is necessary, and as a taxpayer and a parent, I am hopeful that our town leaders will work with their constituents and the district to properly fund all areas of our towns. Thank you for giving me the time to clarify my wording, and thank you for your support of our faculty and staff.
Thank you, Stephanie. I think we'll skip number six and go to a business office update. Brian?
Okay, again, I'd like to start. I am, my name is Brian Hyde. I work for a company called TMS. We're here to help out. And while we're here, the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District's Business Office, we are committed to supporting continuous improvement, transparent communication, and fiscal responsibility leading to student achievement and student success. We are a unified team with the purpose of being a high-performing school district, and I hope that this meeting is one more step in that process. In front of you, members, first of all, good evening. I'm Adam Chairstaff, and members of the committee. FY '26 in your budget actuals in front of you, and it was, I, you have two copies. You get a copy in your packet, and then that link was updated Tuesday because we updated all our revenue through October. So as of today, all revenue has been balanced, and it's in real-time information in front of you. We continue to extrapolate payroll. Someone had mentioned on the microphone, yes, sir?
Excuse me, just a question, and it was brought up by Mr. Rafi at our last meeting. Can you just verify what you have for the Chapter 78 as, as our revenue? Because our state rep texted me that night at the meeting and said, well, what is Mr. Hyde using as a number? And that number is still not correct on these papers tonight.
Okay, so the number that's in your packet was what was budgeted in the spring of FY 2024, and it was the governor's original budget that went before it was up the Ways and Means Committee, and the preliminary number was, what's in the packet, 25-plus million, I think?
Can we have the final number? It's been voted. Our state representative from Whitman, Abington, and East Bridgewater specifically texted me and said the amount.
Okay.
It's 26 million. I know you don't do the updating, whoever in TMS does, please update this number.
I do have this month's revenue, and from the Chapter 70 funds, our school choice revenue, our unrestricted general government aid, our charter school tuition assessments. I have that information with me, and I brought copies for everybody at the table. That number changes. There isn't a set number. It sounds like the government-
There is for what they voted for, FY '26.
I understand.
Yeah, okay, do you?
I do.
Do you really?
Yes.
I've been on this school committee as long as those young ladies have been going to school, and I am so embarrassed. This is absolutely bold. This, this shouldn't be happening.
What's this?
I am, I am, I'm with them, and I've always been with them. Spent 30 years in the classroom, I want to go back to the classroom? I don't even know if I- was what was budgeted in the spring of FY 2024. And it was the governor's original budget that went before it was up the Ways and Means Committee. And the preliminary number was, what's in the packet? 25-plus million, I think.
Can we have the final number? It's been voted. Our state representative from Whitman, Abington, and East Bridgewater specifically texted me and said the amount.
Okay.
It's 26 million. I know you don't do the updating. Whoever in TMS does, please update this number.
I do have this month's revenue and from the Chapter 70 funds, our school choice revenue, our unrestricted general government aid, our charter school tuition assessments. I have that information with me, and I brought copies for everybody at the table. That number changes. There isn't a set number. It sounds like the government--
There is for what they voted for, FY '26.
I understand.
Yeah, okay, do you?
I do.
Do you really?
Yes.
I've been on this school committee as long as those young ladies have been going to school, and I am so embarrassed. This is absolutely bold. This shouldn't be happening.
What's--
I am with them, and I've always been with them. Spent 30 years in the classroom. I want to go back to the classroom? I don't even know if I want to run again in May because of this atrocity. This is ridiculous.
Okay.
Do you want me to have the state rep call you? Give you the number herself?
Sure, I'd be happy, that'd be fine. I can tell you what the Department of Revenue tells us and what they've been giving us monthly. This past month, we received $2,081,093. Okay, now, the number last month was different. It changes based on your school choice tuition and your school choice assessments going out. But I do have a number of $26,188,140. If we extrapolated our October revenue, ACH money from the state, and multiplied by 12, it would be $26,188,140. I did go online at TJ's request. I did talk to Jay Sullivan from DESI. And those numbers are estimated numbers. They do change monthly. Now, what was appropriated by the state? We can, if you know that number, that's great. I can probably dig that up somewhere. I don't have that, but we can look for it. And I'm sure it's out there somewhere. But the question is, who has the accurate number? Is what you're saying?
Our state representative. 26 million, I got on my phone. 26,604, and I forget the rest.
Okay, so if it was 20,604, this month, again, we got $2,081,093 in money, which was, Chapter 78 was $2,35,031. We received $30,657 for school choice receiving tuition. We received $24,996 for charter school tuition and assessment reimbursement, and received additional Chapter 70 money this month at $147,314 for a total gross-- and I can give you all copies of this. I'll pass it out now so you can see what I'm reading.
I never heard of Chapter 78 changing for any district or--
I'm not saying Chapter 70 is changing. I'm saying every month, disbursement from the state is a different number. And that's very common. That happens every state. You can ask your town treasurers or your town accountants in Whitman and/or Hansen. Our assessments, I'm sorry, if you look at the paper that's being passed down the table, did everyone get one? Okay, so I had a question from a, I think Ms. Blackman sent me a question this morning. So I just researched today on this. This is our October 31st revenue and assessment, a cherry sheet, so to say, okay? And the bottom is the difference between the revenue and the assessments. Now, when the revenue comes in, it's placed in a fund by state law. The fund code is 4001. The expenses on the bottom half of the page are charged to 4001, same revenue fund, via journal entries and transfers from the general fund. The FY, you'll see, the question was about school choice this morning. You'll see that school choice tuition in is $30,657 a month. School choice tuition out is $30,924. It's about $300 more out. That deficit has been accounted for in the current FY '26 deficit. On the back of this is our revenue received. It's a Munis report. We received $122,628 to date, which is basically the $30,657 times four. Again, I don't know if that number is divisible by four into 30,657 without pulling out a calculator, but roughly $30,000 a month. Question to Stephanie, yes?
Sorry, so in the Munis report that you gave us dated 10/31/25, line number 9110, tuition, school choice, is listed at $293,014, which sounds like a lot of money. And it says year-to-date actual is $123,696. And yet, here, you're saying that it's $30,924? I'm having trouble understanding how those numbers all line up, please.
Okay, so if, just go back to the very first thing. I missed the beginning of that. What are you looking at for a document?
So I'm looking at the Munis report that was printed for 10/31/25.
10/31/25, okay.
Yes. On page 22, underneath tuition, school choice, which is line, or item Munis number 9110, it states that it was appropriated $293,014, that the revised budget was $293,014. Year-to-date actual is $123,696. I'm guessing that's money spent. And that available budget is $169,318. However, on your form here, it says that the school choice is $30,924. And that's a very big difference. And I'm just trying to understand why there's such a large gap between what you're showing us on this sheet that you've got highlights--
If I could just cut you off for a second. This $30,000 is this month's assessment. The $122,000 is the last four months expenditures. So 30 times four is roughly, it's 120, but it's 123, whatever the number was. So this is the monthly assessment that I gave you today. The Munis report has the year-to-date overall appropriation, expenditures to date, and current available balance.
Okay, so my question that I emailed you this morning was, where is the school choice tuition in your revenue chart on page one? Because that's not included here. And I just, I'm asking not to be difficult, Mr. Hyde, only because if we have an extra couple hundred thousand dollars, that's positions that we can use in our schools. And so those details are important.
Excellent question. Again, I may need a little more time to review this question. However, my assumption is that when this budget was created in January, February, March of 2024, the assumption at the time was that Chapter 78 inclusive of the school choice receiving tuition or not inclusive of the school choice tuition. I'd have to do some homework on how they actually budgeted that. But I do know that this money that came in, the $30,657, $30,900 went out. So we're in a deficit in school choice.
But you've listed it as an expense line and not as an income line. So I'm just looking for clarification on that. And I understand that you don't have the answer right now.
No, I think I do have the answer. It's, the money was, the $295,000 was budgeted for school choice. When the revenue comes in, it goes into the revenue line, and it's expended, it's, I think, to be honest with you, I'd have to look at the final number. I believe it's in the Chapter 70, $26 million. The 25,929. I don't know where else they would have budgeted it. I think Chapter 70 is all-inclusive. Or this 4,100 line is used. When the money comes in, it goes out from that particular revolving account by mass general law.
Okay, so if you, who's very familiar with how this all works, is having difficulty understanding it, I just want to make clear this is why I'm having difficulty understanding it. This is why the majority of the committee is having a difficult time understanding it. And this is why I actually asked you via email if you would kindly provide us an old-fashioned checkbook-style, run-and-balance kind of a, you know, money-in, money-out type of a thing so that we can maybe follow it. So I'm just asking, we're looking for transparency so we can provide transparency to our constituents. And right now, I don't have any. What you're giving me, unfortunately, I'm sure it's a good effort, but unfortunately, I'm not able to get anything out of it, except that I still have a lot of unanswered questions.
Okay, so let's just repeat. The money that comes in from school choice tuition is put into a revolving account by mass general law under account number 4001. When the assessments come in, which is on the Munis report, the money is, the expenses are charged to the revolving account 4001, and it's journal-entered, transferred back to the general fund where it was budgeted. I don't understand what, go ahead.
If anybody has a translator app that can help me with that, I would appreciate it. I'm done.
Stephanie, not appropriate, not appropriate in the meeting. Remember your norms? Excuse me, remember your norms, please. I was addressing my committee, please.
So if anybody in the audience is unclear, let me just repeat. So if I just may be clear, if anybody in the audience needs support, $30,000 a month comes in for school choice. $30,000 a month goes out for school choice. The money that comes in from the state goes into a revolving account. The money that goes out is from the general fund and journal-entered into the revenue account 4001. And if I'm not saying it clearly, I apologize. So I'm going to continue. We do continue to extrapolate the payroll. We're working on that this week. We did it the prior week. Again, we take everyone's salaries. We multiply by the 22 weeks or 26 weeks. We have payroll, cross-referencing our numbers, and we continue to see where we are on a daily, on a weekly basis. Chasing our revenue is continuing. And I'll tell you, you have one heck of a treasurer in Marilyn Thompson. She is a treasurer extraordinaire. I'm telling you right now, she is really, really good. I've been around this block. I've been in multiple school districts. Marilyn balances revenue at the end of every month. This last week, they asked a question from the committee was, are we balanced? Marilyn Thompson balances revenue at the end of every single month with our bank statements. Then the treasurer and the account reconcile Munis postings to the treasurer's amounts. Revenue reconcile is up to date in real-time as of October 31st. Any questions for FY '26? FY '27?
Wait a minute, we have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, jeez, I'm sorry.
I was just a little slow pushing my button here. TJ? TJ?
Thank you. I want to follow up on a question that we discussed in the Budget Committee, Subcommittee last week. So we have the Munis budget in front of us of $64.5 million, to use a round number. Can you clarify how much money the school district spends from other accounts that are not represented in the general ledger on an annual basis?
Like, i.e., 94, the grants, titles, special ed grants, revolving accounts, et cetera?
Yeah, the number of accounts we discussed are not represented in the general ledger.
Numbers of accounts that are not represented in the general ledger, not general fund accounts.
The 64 million, 64.5 million is not the actual amount of money the school district spends every year.
100%, general fund appropriation. The, not the alternate funding sources, I think you're asking. I can find those numbers. I don't have those here. But again, we have, I know that they've used in the past, facility rentals, they use athletic revolving, we use the Title I, Title II, Title IV, 94-142 special ed grant, the early elementary child education grant, the 94-142. But I can certainly find all that information out.
Chris?
I'm sorry, if I could just continue. I think what TJ's question is, everyone thinks our budget is 64 million. It's much more than that. It's probably 70, 72 million. Maybe not 72, but I'd say it's high 60s. But we will find out that exact number and what has been appropriated for the FY '26 budget in alternate funding sources. I do. Okay, so FY '27. We're in the next. And the superintendent, who is not here right now, but the Budget Subcommittee did meet this week. The preliminary-- Well, I don't want to talk over people. Okay. The Budget Subcommittee met this week. We have proposed an FY '27 budget calendar to steer us from the past and have a very clear, opening, again, transparent budget process. We've included the Whitman and Hansen Finance Committees. We've included the School Committee Budget Subcommittee, the administrative team, the school councils are involved, et cetera. So there is a process in place. Hopefully, the committee will approve it. And if anybody in the Budget Subcommittee wants to add to the FY '27 process, they can do that now or during the report later.
We're going to push an agreement with the chair of the Subcommittee to April 3rd.
Beth, I think-- Excuse me, December 3rd.
Okay, I'm going to continue.
Rosemary, did you have your hand up?
I think it's under superintendent's report, but it's prevalent to the, it pertains to the Subcommittee. It is the result of the Zoom meeting with DOR, the Department of Revenue, and DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I don't know what my committee would like to do with that or how we want to handle that.
I'd like to go, and after Brian finishes, to go to adjourn, but have closing public comment because I have some public comment here. I'd like to do that and put everything off to December 3rd after he finishes.
Would you like me to continue? Okay, so I did have some update from the business office itself. I wanted people to know what's going on in the business office. I don't think it's, I'm not sure if you want me to go through the business office, what's going on in the office. But there's a lot of good things happening. And I know there's a budget crisis right now, and there's a lot of lack of trust with some people in the district. However, I believe that the office staff itself is very capable. We've, our human resource person, Michelle Lindberg, our payroll person, I don't think anyone's missed a paycheck. And that's a lot of work. There's 700 employees here. There's 700 employees here. Yes. They do a wonderful job. Our bills are getting paid. Joey DePina is our accounts payable specialist, and again, a Whitman Hansen graduate.
In the interest of time, can we focus just on the financials?
Yeah, sure. Okay, so the next question I had was the PO process. There's a question from, I think it was TJ, who had asked about, what is the current PO process? PO is purchase orders. We run a purchase order system. No one can order any products or services without approval in multiple levels. So what happens, an employee, maybe a teacher needs a stapler or a microscope or something. The employee seeks approval from the principal, the director, for a needed purchase. At that point, the principal and director, usually their administrative assistant, creates a requisition in Munis. The requisition, each school has three staff members with Munis access, the principal, the assistant principal, and the administrative assistant for the principal. Once the requisition is created, it goes, it gets kicked to the principal or director. And the requisition in Munis is approved as an appropriate expenditure. After it leaves the building or department, it comes to central office. Then the assistant superintendent confirms, A, that the correct general ledger account number is on that purchase order, and also there's available budget in that line item to pay for that service or the good. Then the person, the assistant superintendent will either approve the purchase order, deny the purchase order, or hold the requis-- I'm sorry, it's a requisition at this point, and hold the requisition. If it's held, a reason's provided to the building administrator who's communicated to the employee. The requisition then becomes a purchase order. It gets kicked to the superintendent of schools. It would get kicked to the finance director. There's no finance director in the district right now, so the superintendent is acting in that role. And he provides final approval. At that point, it gets, the purchase order is open for the employee or the administrative assistant at the building level or department level to order that supply or service. So that's the purchase order process currently in place at the Whitman Hansen Regional School District. And that concludes my report.
So at this time, we're going to, anything else on the agenda is going to be moved to the third. And we're going to, now, if people are still wanting to, those who signed up for the closing public comment, I'll call, I'll call you in.
There's a hand raised, Beth.
Chair.
I'm sorry, Stephanie.
That's okay. I'd just like to make a motion. I move that the committee hold a special meeting on Tuesday, November 25th at 6:30 PM in the Whitman-Hanson Regional High School Performing Arts Center to discuss the vote of no confidence, to inform the public of what policy and procedural changes have been made since October 24th, to inform the public of what changes the school committee and administration will continue to implement to ensure fiscal transparency, and to listen to our constituents beyond a 15-minute period regarding their concerns for the district's financial situation and handling of the reduction in force.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. And second. Do I have any comment?
Stephanie, are you requesting a business meeting or are you requesting a public hearing? Because those two things are very different. Because if it's a business meeting, then we do have a limit to public comment per our policy. If it's a public hearing, we have a little more flexibility. So I think, and we have to post appro, we have to post appropriately for those.
Thank you for asking the clarifying question. According to some of the classes that I took at the conference last week, they recommend having a listening session. So I would say that that is a public forum where the public can speak to us.
We don't have that in our policy, is what I'm saying.
Okay, we, we wouldn't speak back to them. I'll work on that. But, so, not a business.
Stephanie, please keep going.
So it, I guess it would, what, it was a business meeting or what was your other option?
So typically, when we do the budget, we have a business meeting, but within that meeting, we have a public hearing section. So you could do that to circumvent the limitations to public comment. So, because I wrote the, I helped, I was on policy sub when we wrote the, the public speaking. That would be probably, based on what you're suggesting the meeting would go, because the business doesn't sound like there's a big business. It sounds like the bigger piece is listening to constituents. So perhaps that would be what we would want to do.
I think that that would be wonderful. So I move that the committee hold a special meeting to have an open hearing as well as to address the vote of no confidence, inform the public of what policy and procedural changes have been made since October 24th, and inform the public of what changes the school committee and administration will continue to implement to ensure fiscal transparency.
Second.
And the reason that I'm asking for that is because I would like to be able to prepare a document with other committee members so that you guys have something and it can hold us accountable through actual paper. I have not had time. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Yeah, we have, yeah. Okay, any other question, comment? All in favor? Okay. I will make sure that gets posted for 6:30 regular time. Stephanie?
6:30 on Tuesday, the 25th, just because the next day is the day before Thanksgiving, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so public comment for the...
We have one more hand up.
Oh, TJ, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that the agenda for next Tuesday include reorganization of the school committee.
That's fine.
I second that motion.
So there's a motion on the floor to include that. Did I, I had a second? All in favor? It does not pass. All right, I thought it had to be a majority, sorry. It's, a majority of the committee, sorry. It passed.
It passed.
All right. Darrell Goffalo? You're not going to talk? Okay, Darrell. Riley Jermaine?
Riley Jermaine, 45, Thera Drive, Hanson. Hi, my name is Riley Jermaine and I'm a junior here at Whitman-Hanson. To start off, I just want to tell all the teachers here that we love and support you. If it wasn't clear from the heartfelt speeches, standing ovations, and tears, the students here have made genuine connections with their teachers and we are devastated to see some of our beloved staff leave. Today, I'm going to tell a quick story that takes place in 1994. My dad lived in Hanson and my mom lived in Whitman. And in these very hallways, junior year, my dad asked my mom to prom and they've been in love ever since then. They chose to raise me and my brother here, here in Whitman-Hanson because of their experience through the education system and community. It's absolutely heartbreaking to see my community struggle so much in this time. I've built so many meaningful relationships with staff and it's awful to see these loving teachers and counselors be let go. Many students and parents, including myself, have been hurt personally and confused by this deficit. What I and many others want is a release of the spending. We want a clear answer of what the district spent our money on that created a deficit so large that so many loving staff members had to be let go of. Thank you for your time.
Shannon Baff, if I'm saying it correctly?
Alf?
Okay, sorry.
Hello, my name is Shannon Alf, 76, Helen Drive, Hanson. I just came up here to say how disappointed I am in the leaders of this district who made the reduction in force decisions to lay off some of my favorite Whitman-Hanson staff members. More specifically, I came up here to share with you the detrimental, or the, sorry, the detriment, the decision-making regarding the loss of Ms. Scheim will be on the Whitman-Hanson community. Ms. Scheim is an amazing woman who has such a positive impact on me and so many of my peers. Ms. Scheim will be greatly missed within our community and I know she will carry her bright, caring personality with her wherever she goes. Lastly, I would like to finish up by saying, Ms. Scheim, we truly all love you and would like to say, or as you always say, continue to Scheim on.
Chloe Lucier?
Hi, I'm Chloe Lucier. I'm a junior here at Whitman-Hanson and I live 43 Helen Drive. Today, I would like to speak on behalf of all the students here in our district. I understand that there's no easy fix to this issue. That being said, cutting our staff is not what is needed. The cuts of the elementary school teachers, paraprofessionals, kindergarten teachers, reading interventionists, special education teachers, tech employees, and counselors is completely unacceptable. These are the people children and teens rely on. Creating a safe school environment is always preached here in the Whitman-Hanson district. However, removing these crucial staff members prevents this from being a possibility. These teachers bond with their students and build strong connections. Ripping these trusted adults is not fair to the students and their mental health, nor is it fair to these staff members. So while yes, a change is needed here in Whitman-Hanson, this approach is hurting our students and our community more than it is helping us. Thank you.
Caitlin Kuhn?
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Kuhn. My address is 596 South Ave. I'm a Whitman resident with three children in the district, one at the high school, one at Whitman Middle, and one at Duval. So I see directly how district decisions impact students across multiple grades and buildings. Over the past two weeks, our community has been shocked, confused, and overwhelmed by the sudden staffing cuts, unclear timelines, and information that has been difficult for families to follow. I'm not here to place blame. I'm here to advocate for clarity, stability, and transparency so parents can help support real solutions. I want to acknowledge that students, teachers, and staff are feeling right now. Educators are scared and grieve in the loss of colleagues. Students have lost trusted teachers and are unsure what their learning environment will look like. Families want answers, not because we are looking for conflict, but because we cannot support our children without understanding the facts behind what happened. What families need now is simple and reasonable. We need clear, consistent communication that explains what led to this situation, what the plan is moving forward, and what safeguards will be put into place so this doesn't happen again. Families should not be piecing together information through rumors, screenshots, secondhand conversations. We need one shared, accurate picture. I also want to speak specifically to the special education. As a parent of three IEP students, I know firsthand how vital it is that every child continues receiving the services they are entitled to. The law requires that service remain uninterrupted and many families are worried about whether staffing changes will affect their child's support. Parents need reassurance that monitoring staff and compliance are being actively managed and that every student's IEP will be fully followed without disruption. With that in mind, I have a few questions that I believe would benefit the entire community. One, when will the district provide a clear, public summary in plain language explaining what caused the deficit and the timeline of decisions that led to these mid-year reductions? Two, what is the plan to stabilize classrooms immediately, especially for students who have lost core teachers or special education staff? Three, what systems or safeguards are being put into place to ensure future budget projections, staffing decisions, and payroll tracking are accurate, transparent, and communicated to the school committee before a crisis occurs? Four, can families receive a clear outline of how IEP services will remain compliant during this period of staffing disruption, including who is monitoring this and how concerns should be reported? These questions are not accretory. They are what parents need in order to support our teachers, support this committee, and support our children. Our district is facing real financial challenges, but students should never become the collateral damage because administrative breakdowns or communication gaps. Parents and community members are ready to be a part of the solution. We want to help rebuild trust and work together for a stronger, more stable district. That begins with clear communication and honest answers. Thank you for your time and thank you to every educator and staff member who continues to show up for our kids during such a difficult and uncertain time. We see you, we appreciate you, and we will continue to stand with you. Thank you.
Cheryl Happany?
Sorry? Hi, I'm Cheryl Happany, 53, Romeo Ave. Dear school administration, superintendent, school committee, and community, I am ready to express my deep concern and disappointment regarding the decision to let go of adjustment counselor Ms. Scheim. As a parent and a member of this school committee, I feel compelled to speak up because this decision impacts the students who rely on her every day. At the time when the stress of high school students put on themselves, getting good grades, fitting in, playing sports, getting involved in clubs, college applications, what trades they might want to get into, or just trying to figure out what they want to do next after graduation, their mental health needs are at an all-time high. And removing a highly effective and deeply trusted adjustment counselor is difficult to understand. This person has consistently demonstrated exceptional dedication, compassion, and skill in her work with students. It is clear that Ms. Scheim is someone they feel safe with, someone they trust, and someone who has built strong, meaningful relationships that cannot simply be transferred to another staff member without consequences. Last year, she was recognized for Admin of the Year, a testament to both her professionalism and the tremendous positive impact she has on the school committee. Community, sorry. It is hard to reconcile that achievement with the current decision, especially given previous assurances from the administration that positions directly supporting students would not be cut. This decision will undoubtedly place additional strain on the remaining support staff and will leave many students without stable, supportive adults that they depend on. Mental health is not an area where schools can afford to risk or make abrupt changes. And I strongly urge the administration to try to find another way. I know I'm grasping, but I ask that they try to evaluate this action with the students' well-being at the center of the discussion. Thank you for your time and your attention to this serious concern. And I hope that the committee and the district will take the opportunity to reflect and make a decision that truly supports the needs of the students of Whitman-Hanson.
And next I have, last one is Becca. I'm sorry, I can't read your last name. Is there a Becca here? From Harvard Street?
Hi, my name's John Badger, 4 Rebecca Road. I've had, three of my kids graduated from here, 2016, and my twins in 19. The school is the foundation of the community. And what's happening, whatever it is, is just troubling. And I know it's not a quick solution, but, you know, you took two and a half hours of our time tonight. I think it's only fair you have an open mic with the public. Two hours of Q and A. It's not that hard.
Okay, motion to adjourn, please. Only if you give me a hug first.
All right, so I don't live in Whitman or Hanson and I don't want to give out my town, but Mrs. Scheim, school adjustment counselor at the high school, I obviously didn't expect to come up here, but just the outpouring support is unreal. Sorry. There's nothing I love more than being a part of this community for the students, the staff, and everything that I've learned over the last probably six and a half, seven years being here, starting as a paraprofessional and moving up to a school adjustment counselor. Just doing my job and just doing what I can for the kids, the only thing I've ever wanted to do is leave a mark and make a difference and just let the kids soar and grow to who they can be. And I'm grateful that I was able to do that. Obviously, it's, was so unexpected, myself and my co-counselor, Ms. Atchison, who I love dearly. You know, and I always think like, you know, do what's best for kids and everything else. That's always been my motto. And I've always had a dream to leave that mark on someone and I'm so grateful I did. I know obviously there's nothing we can do with the budget deficit and everything, but I just want to, just, I wanted to be able to say something because these kids mean more than anything to me, their success and who they are as people and their growth. Sorry. And I just, I just love them so much. And I'm just so grateful to just see them learn and grow and just become like, the amount of kids that went up here and talked, it's just unreal. And I'm just so proud of them and I'm just so glad that I could be that piece of an impact on them. So thank you.
Motion to adjourn. And I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everybody, for all your comments and I'm glad we let everybody on this list talk. Thank you.